Alright, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight.
So am I.
I would love to open the meeting with a roll call to go into executive session for reason number two, to conduct strategy with respect to non-union negotiations or to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel to focus on the interim superintendent.
John Burke?
Here.
Will Sankleit?
Yes, here.
Steve Sylvia is not in attendance. Jen Blum?
Here.
Bob Clark?
Yes.
Carolina Hernandez?
Here.
Crystal Ling?
Here.
Courtney Breigman?
Yes.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. This meeting has already been an executive session and the committee has now returned for the open meeting. In addition, Ms. Terri Fleming, Mr. Jack Higgins, and Ms. Kelly Steele are present. Seeing late cam here, is anybody else recording the meeting tonight? Alright, seeing none, I'll invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept minutes from the February 5th meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Have a meeting and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Minutes are approved. I'll also entertain a motion to accept executive session meetings, executive session minutes, I'm sorry, from January 15th of this year. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I'm abstaining.
John, real quick, that was for January 15th, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yep.
Okay, motion passes, thank you.
One more, right?
Yes.
February's, February 5th.
Oh, oh, sorry. I'll entertain a motion to accept minutes from the executive session for February 5th. Almost.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, aye?
I would abstain as well.
Minutes are approved, thank you, everybody. Okay. It says if we do not have any student presentations for tonight?
Yep. We do. We do, the student reps are doing it together with the presentation below.
Got it.
Okay, I apologize for that. Okay, we welcome our students from Uponaquit for a presentation. Our students and faculty.
Big crew.
While we're getting that set up, I'll just start to say, thank you very much for having us, we've looked forward to this. Last year, we talked about the electives that we have, and this year, we decided to talk about our clubs and activities, because it's something that you can't see from the outside, but there's so much that they do. So we have a few students who haven't come yet, or a little bit early, I'm cutting it very close, but they'll, you know, be coming in. So these are just a few of the five, more than 500 students who are involved in clubs and activities, so we have a slideshow for you.
Of course, I tested this just before.
I know you did. You're buying us a minute for our busy kids.
Feel free to take things out of order if you're waiting for people to come.
It's okay, we can cover four of them.
Ryan? A hand? Got it.
Can you start the presentation? Missed it a few.
Huh?
That's not where it starts.
Pardon me?
Not where it starts, go back.
Starts a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
Just a picture of us being all like a proud, okay.
Thank you. Again?
So, our students, we're going to start talking about the reason that we decided to focus on activities, is that it's a way to develop relationships, a way to find out about career paths, to follow their passion, to be part of something, and to make a difference, and they do. We had, last year, according to MIAA, we had 596 participants of less than 700 students in 24 sports. This year, we have 588 club memberships. So we talk about athletics, and those are important for us to see, but this is something you don't always see going on behind the scenes, so this is a chance for us to show you that. Life Club, always right in time. Life Club.
That's okay.
Life is an inclusive club for students with and without disabilities, with the purpose of establishing and maintaining meaningful friendships, focusing on school and local community engagement, and spreading awareness. Life provides so many opportunities to build and maintain friendships in school, at monthly meetings, at school events, and activities throughout the year, as well as field trips in the community such as the park in Bolin.
Life aims to support community engagement, including a canned food and non-perishable drive before Thanksgiving, and a Toys for Tots toy drive during Christmas time, both of which give back to local families in need. The Life Club is continuously spreading awareness about a variety of disabilities and conditions, as well as the need to create an inclusive school and world for everyone.
And if you love life...
Well, fuck you back.
Life will love you back, thank you, Theo.
I just want to give him time.
Hi.
Listen up.
I'm Sylvia.
I'm Aurora. And we're looking over at the Unified Sports.
So Unified Sports, you can get varsity letters that give students, or varsity sports that give students varsity letters.
So it includes co-ed teams, including boys and girls, and it's made of students with and without disabilities.
For track, practice is two times a week, or for two and a half hours, and there are six basketball games and four track meets per season, with highlights shared the next day on the morning announcements.
At the end of the season, Unified Basketball has a jamboree that brings together approximately six different Unified Basketball teams to participate in a tournament-style play through a series of shortened games with two to three different schools.
Unified Track has the opportunity to qualify for state track meets and compete against Unified Track teams from across the state.
Senior basketball game and track meets get to celebrate and recognize seniors, athletes, and their families. We decorate and have posters and treats for players and their parents and guardians.
The whole school and community engagement by inviting everyone via flyers, morning announcements, including sports teams, student government, staff, et cetera, to attend home track meets and Unified Basketball, and the cheerleading squad comes to support.
And that's it. Thank you.
The next one? National Honor Society.
So, my name is Eugene Jung, I'm the president of the National Honor Society. Alright, so these students are a group of selected students that have a 3.6 GPA or higher, and are exhibiting high character or leadership qualities, and right after they get inducted and they're part of the National Honor Society, they're not only required to uphold these expectations, but also add on to them. So they're required to add 20 hours of community service each year. So we have 167 members this year, which means that there's around 110,000 hours that are given back to our community, and this is really important for not only our community, but also our students itself, because they learn responsibility, as well as the importance of giving back to their community, so, I mean, that's pretty much it, we have a meeting monthly, and yeah.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Connolly, the VP of DECA, and DECA's our, I think it's our most, our most populated club at Uponaquit. It consists of, we go out to different places like districts, states, and nationals to complete, to compete in different business-oriented, either you could do a role play, a paper, or one of those competitions, and you're handed a prompt or an issue, and then you devise a plan to complete this, and then if you do good at either of these events, you go on to hopefully compete at Nationals, and it's a great way to travel, as well as learn more about business, finance, and entrepreneurship.
What are you doing tomorrow?
Oh, and we're going to the States tomorrow.
Hi, I'm Alex Baker. Game Club is really what it sounds like, we play games for an hour, and honestly, it's really fun, it's very relaxed environment, you can join like your senior year, freshman year, you won't miss much, it's a very easy way to build a community of people you might not meet otherwise, to kind of bond over a common interest. A lot of my friends that I currently have, I met my sophomore year in Game Club. It's really, just an easy, kind of fun hour to have outside of school after all of your hard AP and honors classes, so it's very fun and welcoming environment, and that's it.
Our green team is very involved in recycling and doing acts to make our community better. Last year, they planted hundreds of bulbs of tulips, for instance, to decorate in the courtyard. Next?
Hello, I'm Ryan O'Connor, and I'm a part of Laker Athletic Development Club here at Uponaquit, so this is about strengthening and like working on endurance, strength, speed for sports, so people who don't have a winter sport, we work on lifting weights, we did yoga today, and then we also work on all different sports, for anyone who's not playing a winter sport, and then Coach Fife leads it, he's great, he's very knowledgeable in all different sports, so we do different exercises and stretches, and learn all sorts of Laker development for sports, so that's the leaderboard right there for our top lifters, and then that's us today lifting in the weight room.
ASP is a very popular club, this is, this picture is a few years old, they went to Washington DC a few years ago with students, we've done that with a different group lately, so there is the travel component. But they have been, they planned, created, researched, set it up, and I just wanted you to see the progress for their mural in the cafeteria, if you could just do the next few slides, Ms. Fleming? There they go, they're working, here it is, and that's where they were as of yesterday. So, these students, of course, you know, want to be here, but they're very busy in many different clubs, so just speaking for them, thank you.
But Club at Uponaquit currently aims to meet twice a month, and each month, we read books that relate to a different theme. This month, we did a blind date with a book for February, where members were assigned a person to choose a book for, and the book you received is yours to read for the month. The book I ended up receiving was from Buick 8, because my friend remembered I'd been dying to read it for forever. Other themes we've done are Stephen King for October, books about friendship, or Friendsgiving in November, and upcoming in March, we'll be reading books either set in Ireland or by Irish authors. I personally have found Book Club to be a fun experience, where I discover new books and get to discuss them with friends. I used to be a total book maniac, I mean, I read Percy Jackson in like three months, it was a problem, but ever since COVID hit, I just found I couldn't really read again, like as much as I used to, but joining Book Club, it actually forced me to be like, okay, I have a deadline, I have to read this book, and I ended up discovering my like passion for reading again, and I've been tearing through books ever since. And the Sales Network in particular has been a pivotal resource for Book Club, because it gives us not only significantly larger range of books to choose from, but it allows us to get enough copies for whatever book we need, because we have a whole whopping like 10-ish members of Book Club. And in short, Book Club is a lot of fun for anyone that loves to read, explore new genres they never thought they'd find themselves interested in, and I highly recommend joining.
I'm back.
Hi, I'm Gabriela Fernandez, and I'm the band president.
I'm Abby Helbridge, and I'm vice president for choir.
I'm Sam Marshall, I'm representing the jazz band and the librarian of the band.
So, our band is basic, well, let me start off by saying that band and choir, they're not so much clubs, they're like, they're classes, and we want to make that like known, because some people forget about band and choir as classes, but we still want to talk about them. So, band, basically, you pick an instrument that you want to play, and you learn great music, and you collaborate with other people to play, and it's a great experience, we have a concert coming up March 6th.
March 6th, ensemble night.
Yeah, it's a solos and ensembles concert, which highlights specific musicians and whole ensembles that they play in, and yeah. Choir?
Choir and select choir-wise, choir also is technically a class, not a club, you can join select choir if you love singing so gosh darn much that you want to do it more than once in your day, that's unfree, that's every Tuesday, we meet weekly, and choir, it's just a lot of fun, honestly, I've been singing since I was little, and so naturally, I joined choir, I've been in it all four years, and it's not only just a class you can take, where like you learn your technique, you learn how to sing, but you do like another, like many out-of-school opportunities, like one thing I love to do every year is we go caroling at all the different schools for Christmas, and another thing we do are the semeswa and semi competitions, or competitions, I say, it's basically a choir you audition to get into, and this year, which is super exciting, we're sending two kids, we're sending two students, including myself, to all states this year. We had three last year, and that was the first app for a few years in a while. And select choir is basically, as it sounds, you audition to get in, you sing tougher pieces, you also perform at the three different concerts we give in a year, and that's basically choir and select choir.
I'm representing jazz band. Jazz band is a separate group of musicians, most of whom are from the concert band, but students can also join if they're not in that class, we meet after school every Tuesday as well, it's a very relaxed environment, but we do generally play more difficult pieces generally, and yeah, it's a whole lot of fun, I really wish personally that I had joined it last year, I was just a little nervous, but it's a really, it's a really great time, and we not only play with the concert band or at their events, but we also play sometimes at like separate venues, like one time we played at the Lakeville Arts and Music Festival, that was really great, yeah.
Hi, I'm Olivia, and this is Grayson, and we're representing Portuguese Club. So Portuguese Club is actually a newer club, it was only started three years ago by the Portuguese teacher, Ms. Mello, and it's a really good club, so you don't have to be in Portuguese, like the class, you don't have to be even Portuguese itself to join, it's really for everyone, it's a celebration of culture, we try Portuguese foods, we watch movies in Portuguese, and then another really great thing we do is we do a collaboration with the Life Club, so every monthly meeting that we have, a lot of their students come and join us, and do like the crafts with us, and it's just a great way to get everyone involved, and we also give back to the community, so Grayson's going to talk about that.
Yeah, so we collaborated with Autumn Glenn's Seniors Living Center, and so we gave them Annie's Kindness blankets, and they were made during Portuguese class, so Annie's Kindness blankets were invented because a young girl, her mother sadly took her life, and she needed some comfort for herself, and it's kind of like a hug, so by these, making these blankets, we're kind of giving the seniors in the living center a hug from Uponaquit, and making them feel at home, and we also gave them Valentine's Day cards that we made also in Portuguese club. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katerina Ivanov, I started the debate club at the beginning of my sophomore year, so it's still relatively new, and we're hoping to compete soon, once we get it going further. Debate Club is comprised of a group of students who select among an array of political, economic, and ethical topics, the debates follow traditional debate structure of 12 minutes each or so, with both affirmative and negative parties. We have debated topics pertaining to the ethical implications of the death penalty, the consequences of AI, and the potential of free post-secondary education, to name a few, but we're still getting the club going, so we hope to continue it further in competitions in the future. Thank you.
I'm Reagan Jensen, I'm the secretary of the Executive Board for Student Council, and here you'll see a picture of all different groups, so this was taken actually at yesterday's monthly meeting for February, but we do all different kinds of events throughout the year that we plan as a group, and you can either be an elective member for your class, an elected member for the Executive Board, or just a council member, and you can just show up and help out, so, and then we do spirit weeks and pep rally, where you can show your school's spirit, we have, we plan out the days for the spirit weeks, and we also allow the classes to decorate their own sections for the pep rallies, and we do all different kinds of games, and then for, we do Turkey Bingo the day before Thanksgiving break, where each student gets a bingo sheet in their class, and it's played over the intercom, reading the bingo numbers by class presidents, and once you get bingo, you run through the hallway gobbling, and go to the closest prize table, and pick up ducks, and you can win prizes, and then this year was our first annual holiday bonanza, which we're hoping to keep a tradition, we decorated courtyards with lights and all different kinds of festive decorations for all different holiday celebrations, we did games and arts and crafts for younger kids, and we opened, and we allowed elementary students to come in with their families and visit as well, along with caroling and a tree lighting ceremony. And our, one of our biggest events is a Ponicon, and that will be held soon in this library, and we do all different kinds of games, we have a fine dining experience, and back there with, and we decorate it all nice, and it's just a way to bring the school together, and allow people to show their interests, and hang out with friends, so.
I'm Nicholas Connolly, I'm a part of the Pokemon Club, and besides collect, just coming together and collecting and playing with Pokemon, it allows students with a similar interest to battle each other, and then we, everyone in the club makes a deck, and then with that deck, they battle other students, hopefully win, and it allows students to strategize ways to beat their opponent. Recently, we've held our first tournament, where we gave our first place winning a few new cards and packs, and it was a really fun time with everyone, and we also started to collaborate with our DECA school store to sell Pokemon packs, where they could start raising money for the club, since it's fairly new, since it started about a month ago with the new Pokemon craze that just started up, but it's a really nice addition to add to the school, and it's a really nice and diverse club as well.
Hello again, so here at Uponaquit, we have a robotics club, very nice robotics club, they do certain activities where they design, test, and do activities where they try and program the robots to make them do, like pick up balls on the table and put them in a bin, so they work on the digital and then the actual making of the robots at this club, and then right now, they're working on doing, looking to compete against other schools in certain competitions with their robots that they design.
Hi, I'm Maddie Santos, I'm a member of the Drama Club, and I have been since my freshman year, the Drama Club is composed of both students with an interest in performing, as well as those who prefer to work behind the scenes and crew, we do a fall play and a spring musical every year, this year's play was The Crucible, and we are currently in rehearsals for Chicago, our spring musical, we meet at least twice a week every week, and it's a really great way to meet people who may like love performing, as I mentioned, or just really like creating, my first year, I didn't really know anyone here, and now I met most of my friends through this, so it's a really great club, and it's a very welcoming environment.
Hi, I'm Logan Ribeiro, I am part of the Equity Team and the Roundtable, so starting off, the Roundtable is a group of students who overall want to improve the learning environment, we, every meeting, we meet during school hours, and we break off in specific teams, and we have a group that's focusing on facilities, trying to improve, one of our things we're trying to improve is the leaks in the ceilings, we also have a group of students working on a senior trip, so they're planning their senior trip before graduation, we are, another group is the mental health group, which is working, we've just been counselors, and we actually just created a lunch group, where students can come into the library in the group projects room, and they can have lunch with volunteer students who give the lunch period to come and to support those students, and we also have a policy group working on, working on, sorry, working on... Yeah, we just finished the five-minute focus presentation for the staff, and we are also working on trying to take a new look at test policies specifically for honors and AP classes, and we're also trying to look at class rank as well. The second team that I'm on is the Equity Team, we actually just created an Equity Board, which is a group of three students who are selected, and we meet the Wednesday prior to the meeting after school, and we kind of discuss of things that we want to incorporate for the next meeting. Currently, right now, we are working on a late bus service for students, because we personally believe that a late bus would support students who maybe wouldn't be able to stay after school for an extra task they have to take, or for a club, ours, we're also working on creating a flex block that we'd like to, like to have in the following years here, yeah.
So, those are just some of the clubs we have, we have more, and we knew we had only so much time, we don't want to take anymore, but I thank the students who came tonight to share with you their passion, they belong to many, many clubs, and athletics, and they're strong students, we know that there's a correlation between being involved in graduation rates and the happiness, right? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have a presentation from our friends over at CPAC.
Good evening, everyone, so we have our monthly CPAC meeting next Tuesday, that is March 4th, and this month, we're going to be holding it in the lecture hall, because we have...
And uh this month, we're gonna be holding it in the lecture hall because we have um a presenter. It's uh Dr. Carolyn McKeerney and she is currently a senior fellow for the South Coast Educational Collaborative. And um Dr. McKeerney is going to be presenting on understanding bullying prevention. So um you know, this is a topic that isn't just uh you know, appropriate for parents that have kiddos with special needs, but also for all parents. So um we hope that you know, everyone will join us, the meeting is open to everyone. Um I'm gonna, I have some flyers that will tell you a little bit more about Dr. McKeerney. Um I'll leave those here on the table and you know, if anyone wants to grab one on the way out, that would be great. Um again, it's next Tuesday in the lecture hall here. Um also, um we applied with the state to get our um nonprofit status and we just received word that we got that. I have a little bit more work to do with um getting our bylaws done, but uh we have been approved by the state. So we're hoping to be able to um do a little bit of fundraising in the future to be able to support having, you know, speakers come to our meetings as well as um fundraising to support any projects within the district um that would benefit um the special education kiddos. So that's that. And like I said, I will put the flyers right here. We hope to see you on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you to whoever helped out with the, with the nonprofit status. I'm sure that was significant amount of work.
Yeah, what, what time was that again?
Is next Tuesday from six thirty to eight.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. FY twenty-six budget discussion.
Thank you. Uh before I get into it, I just had a couple of topics I wanted. Normally, we'll be doing this in the director's report at the other meeting, but I think, I thought it important to just bring it um, just attention to a few things uh for the school committee. Uh one was at the end of last week, on Thursday afternoon, we had um an incident in one of the classrooms with a uh pipe, one of our heating pipes, a crack in it. Uh the, 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 the group of custodians and maintenance, um it really was a sign of just how good they, uh how good they are. Within thirty minutes, they were on site uh addressing the issue and we didn't lose a, a day in the classroom as a result. So we'd look, now mind you, we were lucky, we were on vacation. Um but still, things were up and running and ready for, by, by Monday. And that really is um a testament to the custodians on duty noticing something was wrong, going and attain, addressing it, making the correct phone calls and the maintenance crew making the correct, taking the correct steps. So um it is something though, that we keep a close eye on. Uh these happen about once a year. Most of the time, people don't know uh because they are addressed so quickly. Obviously, having had two incidents in the same building within just about a month of each, each other, it seems like there's a trend. Uh I have been assured by our facilities director, this is not a trend. This is the, you know, this is not uncommon in buildings of the age that we have. Uh and, and quite honestly, in, we've seen it in the cases where in our buildings on the campus, as we address deficiencies and the heating system was asked to behave in its appropriate manner, but in a different manner than it had been, we had seen similar incidents in the buildings on the campus as those deficiencies were addressed, as we are addressing those deficiencies at FBS this year uh through our uh contract with train. The um, I had uh, we had come, it had come to my attention uh just prior to the February fifth, uh well, just about that same time, that the assessment sheet from the FY twenty-five, uh the enrollment numbers used for that were not completely accurate. The number that was used was the number for the October one enrollments for students in the building. We use according to our um, um, according to our agreement, the, the regional agreement, it states that you're using foundational enrollment. The foundational enrollment numbers are provided to us by the state. Those numbers don't necessarily match up directly with number of students in the building from Free Town, from Lakeville, because of the fact that it address, it, it calculates preschool students not as one point O's because they come in for half-day. It also accounts for students that are maybe tuitioned out, but there's still students coming in from towns. So there was a slight variation. The towns were immediately notified. It ultimately uh is gonna cause a, a variance in the assessment from the two towns to make an adjustment of about ten thousand dollars where Free Town is going to have ten thousand dollars less and Lakeville will have ten thousand dollars or more approximately. Uh we have met, we've talked about it, we're addressing it, there, we're, we have identified it and going forward, we shouldn't have that issue because we know that we're using the correct numbers.
Thank you, Jack, appreciate it.
Uh finally, the Habibin Associates, I'm gonna have a meeting with Habibin Associates tomorrow to discuss the, um them putting together a, a proposal for an engineering study on the pool. Um expecting the proposal, I don't have a timeline on that propos, on the proposal, but um I have that meeting scheduled with them tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, so let's get into the budget. Uh in response to some statements made on Monday evening uh regarding the budget, I share with you, the school committee, that the actions that the business office and the uh central office administrators have been taking in the budget process. Uh on February tenth, the Monday after the budget presentation, the, the three of us uh as acting superintendents, um co-superintendents, met with the, invited the town administrators, the town accountants and the finance chairs to meet with us, to go through the budget, to identify, um you know, essentially, to answer any questions that may have come up. Uh in that meeting, we had both town administrators attend, we had both town accountants and the Lakeville finance chair was able to attend as well. We had a follow-up meeting on February nineteenth, that was last week, on Wednesday during the vacation week, with the town administrators um as well as the Lakeville town accountant. Those are regular meetings that we have. That wasn't necessarily, it obviously focused on budget, but those are meetings that we have scheduled on a regular basis with the town administrators, essentially so that we can open up communication and be sure that we have, you know, collaborating as we appropriately. Uh in that, our next meeting is March tenth, so in two weeks, we'll be meeting with them as well, uh following up and having some conversations. And we are in, you know, contact with them as, as needed via phone and email and so forth. To go through what we've done so far, um obviously in the presentation on the fifth, we didn't have all of the information. For example, we didn't quite yet have our health insurance percentage increase. We don't have a contract with our teachers, paras and secretaries for next year yet. Um so there were some assumptions being made and some projections being made. Now that we have the insurance number, for example, now that I have a little bit more bandwidth, I was able to go a little bit more and fine-tune those um salary numbers uh to be able to give us a more accurate uh number. And then looking at some other elements as well, which I'm gonna talk about today. But before I do, I think it's important to look at the assessment sheet, which I've shared with you. I think it's important to understand what is, what is going on. As I shared, um the school committee received an email from me today, as well as the town administrators, the district um, uh the finance committee chairs, uh as well as the regional FinCom members, received an email from the um Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. And they are uh putting together um some grassroots uh movement to, to address the issues that are around chapter seventy and the funding that the towns and the regional school districts are receiving, which over time, we have discovered, they are not addressing the needs of the, of the towns. And there's more and more, excuse me, more and more is being put on the towns on, that's not necessarily what was originally the plan, but the, the calculations and the formula have not kept pace with, with the um, the rates of increases that have been necessary. So if you look at the, the uh, and I apologize, I, I, it would've been good for me to give you the assessment sheet from last year too, but if you can follow along with me, uh you can see where um, where it says chapter seventy aid. The number is twelve million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine. Last year, our chapter seventy aid was eleven million, nine hundred and forty thousand, three thirty-nine. That's an increase of one point six percent. Inflation was about three point six percent. The state increased our aid by two percentage points less. Okay? Now, it is, it is potentially, it is a possibility that through the negotiations, as they go through the process, this is just the governor's budget. Obviously, as the senate and the house go through and present their budgets, this number could increase, but it could also decrease or could just stay the same. Um but you can see how when the money that we're receiving from the state and is an, and is an important piece of our budget is coming from the state and it's increasing at less than two percent, how our costs, which are increasing at the rate of inflation uh or, or greater in some cases, because of course, as you, as you know, anyone who's had to do any facilities work or any construction work in their homes, recognize that materials are much more expensive now than they were five years ago. So we're bear, bearing the weight of that additional cost and the state is not able to support it at this time. So that, in that email that I shared with you, there is a meeting next when, next Tuesday, uh apologize. Uh and in that me, it's, it's a um virtual meeting uh where they're gonna be talking about some of the things that the organization, Mars, Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, is going to take in order to uh hopefully um get some changes made to the formula. Not just in the near term, asking for additional dollars in this year, but also fixing the formula going forward. Also, now I'd like you to move, move down to set line seven, please, well, actually line eight, I apologize, where it says required local contribution. These numbers are also provided to us by the state. So they share these numbers with us as we begin the budget process. You'll see that in the case of Lakeville, it's eleven million, three hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Last year, Free Town's required contribution was eleven million, eighty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-five. So that's an increase of, of contribution requirement of two hundred and twen, about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Okay? So that's an increase of two percent for the contribution from Free Town. For Lakeville, you see fourteen, eight sixty-four, three sixty-seven. Last year's was thirteen, nine oh nine, five oh seven. I promise you, I'll send you, I apologize for not having, I'll send you last year's assessment sheet so you can see the numbers in print. That's an increase of nine hundred and fifty-four thousand. So two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand. I bring it to your attention, that's an increase of six point eight percent. I bring it to your attention because as you look through this assessment sheet, you'll see at the bottom, there's a very significant difference in the percentage increases between the two towns, Free Town and Lakeville. That is as a result of this big change that was identified by the state. This, there hasn't been a dramatic enrollment percentage difference such that would create this disparity in contribution between the two towns. If you look at last year's assessment sheet, the percentage increases were much closer. But this is, this is a result of the fact that the, and, and quite honestly, I don't know enough yet to know where these required, where the required local contribution numbers come from, but I understand it has, it's not, it, it has to do with tax base, but the details I don't know at this, at this time. So. With that being said, we have made some adjustments to the budget as a result of the steps that we have taken, as I shared with you. Uh first of all, the details of salaries, you can see on the handout that I give, I've given you, there are four sheets that have colored, they have some color on them too. That's how you know you're on them. The first one is the teacher contract. So as I said to you, what was done in the budget in order to present a budget that we believe was a reflection of the need, was we took the salary model that we have been using for our negotiations, which shows us the potential increase, but it's a projection, and shows us the potential increase as a result of a new contract at a particular percentage. The teacher contract, the para-professional contract and the secretary contract, the combined increase, I think I shared with you and it's in this budget book. What I did as the, in, in preparation, because we're, mind you, we didn't have the specifics yet, I simply took the total increase from the model and distributed it out in the budget book to each one of the salary lines, for paras, for secretaries, for teachers. Okay? Evenly distributed as a percentage, but not necessarily does it ac, did it accurately reflect at that point, accurately reflect the percentage increase for that particular salary line. But now I have that for you. So over break, over this past week, since we presented this, I went ahead and assigned each one of the employees the salary number that would go along, assuming the negotiations are where, where we are in negotiations currently, with a salary schedule with those numbers, assigning each one, each of our employees that salary number that would coincide with the negotiation at this point. So moving away from the model and the projection, but actually getting a more fine-tuned number. You can see in the case of the uh teachers, that we were, we were aw, it was, it was off by about fifty-four thousand and it would be a budget in, in needed increase and for teachers. But as I said, I spread it out over all the salary lines. The second one is for paras, where in the case of paras, there was um, it had, I had distributed too much in the para lines to a place where the decrease was a hundred and forty-three thousand. And with secretaries, a decrease of about twenty-eight thousand. That's not decreasing salaries for paras or secretaries or increasing salaries for teachers, it's just being more accurate. So now every salary line in the budget, not in your budget book, but in the computer which holds the budget, right, which in our, in our accounting system, which holds the budget, now every one of those salary lines reflects these numbers that you can see here. Okay? And those are direct reflections of the staffing, individual staffing members and numbers that we have in each building across region and the five buildings. So as a result, you can see there's a, a little bit of savings there from our projection to what the, what the more fi, is still a projection because we don't have a contract yet, but a more fine-tuned number from that model. And it's a reduction on the budget of a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars reflected in the assessment sheet that I've given you. In addition to that, we have um, uh Kelly Steele and I have met and discussed the out-of-district tuition because since we created the budget, we have had some addition, some adjustments to our out-of-district tuition in, in the event that we were able to find savings of a hundred and forty-eight thousand and five dollars from out-of-district tuition. These are changes in enrollment, students moving out, students aging out, knowing exactly what we had, for example, we had a particular instance where we had a student moving in and we didn't know what that's, what that budget was going to be exactly, so I had a projected number. We now know the number, bringing it down a little bit as well. Okay? Yeah, it's, it's in that. It's um, you see this? Yep, you see it says out-of-district tuition, one forty-eight oh oh five? Sure. This is what I'm on right now. Okay? In addition to that, so uh in an effort to find savings where we could, um in, the easy savings where they exist, we're at the halfway point in the year, so it was an opportunity to take a look at projected, projections in the current year about what our sub-costs are and then build, and at the half point, it make, point, it makes it a little bit easier to project what the remainder will be. We have some savings in what we see in FY twenty-six relative to that. The projection was a little bit, I, I projected a little bit higher, um realizing that we could bring it down and that number, thirty-six nine eighty, thirty-six thousand, nine eighty. We did get our health insurance numbers and we have an in, health insurance increase of ten point five four percent identified for us by uh Maya. That percentage caused, uh created a savings, a reduction in our budget for our current employee line for insurance costs. However, it caused it, created an increase in our retirement line. They didn't cancel out, there was a little bit more savings in the uh current employee uh line than it was in retirement, giving us a savings at this point of nine, or eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. Okay? And then there was going through, and I'm, this is just because it's, this is, because it's February twenty-sixth, and if it was February twenty-seventh, I might have something else here, but I, this is where the last thing I got to. Um there was identified that we're, we're kind of looking for additional places, I've been in conversations with the principal, you know, what principals, what other places could we save a few bucks uh in order to be able to meet the needs of the town? And one of them was the expense principal office in the high school, there's a reduction of fifteen thousand. So a total right now, uh from the original assessment, a total reduction of four hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, which you can see on that assessment sheet therefore, is now created, our budget number is where we started was forty-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars? No, that's not right now. No, forty-nine, I'm sorry, forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-five, uh one hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. And now we're at forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty and one dollar. I'm sorry, sorry, forty-eight million. Forty-eight million, six hundred and fifty thousand, one dollar is where we are right now. Forty-eight million, six hundred and fifty and one dollar.
Thanks, John. Through the chair, Jack, if this, let's just say, we roll this budget forward into next year, what would the adjusted percentage? year, what would the adjusted percentage increase be? Do you have that number in front of you?
Percentage increase from last year?
Yeah.
I don't, but you can see how it has adjusted on the bottom from, oh, from the assessment sheet. I can give it to you real quick though. Hold on.
Oh, is this, is it 5.9%?
5.9 is what the assessment increase is. It's not that the budget number is actually less than that, but that's because of the, it was 5.5 originally, so it's below 5.5 with the reduction of about 500,000.
Got it, okay. Thank you for this initial work, right? And again, contrary to some of the comments that were made Monday, it sounds like you and the team are already at work trying to adjust and find savings and get the number down to something that's more reasonable for the town. So I appreciate that. The out-of-district tuition makes me nervous. That savings there, as you guys know, that can be volatile, right?
Sure.
So just keep an eye there, that number. Savings are great, but it could easily flip the other way and double, right?
Good. But that is why we have, that's why we have circuit breaker, right?
Yep, 100%.
It is our, it catches us if we fall.
Yep, 100%, 100%. But no, all good there. I appreciate the initial work here, we have more work to do. But it's absolutely a start and I just want to thank you guys.
I'm not done.
Love that.
I appreciate that, but I'm not done.
No, love that.
All right.
Keep it coming.
So we are, we have on the agenda to discuss two areas within the budget book, well, three areas. The first one is salaries. Actually, John, now that, I think it may be a good time to, as you were saying, we have three topics. Salaries, we have special education, and we have technology. We finished the discussion around salaries or my presentation, so if there's any questions...
Yes. I was going to say, if there's any questions from the audience for topics that Jack is, Jack is speaking to, you're welcome to come up and talk them in real time.
Okay. Margaret French, Freetown Finance. A couple of questions. So under circuit breaker, you have actual 1.190 million and under fund balance, 400?
Yep.
Is the 400, what will be there after what is used?
No, so 400 is the number that we'll be using from next year's, for next year's reimbursement, which we already have that number. So we have been told what our reimbursement will be for '26.
Right.
So that number is additional money. As we do typically, we use, we're using a little, we're using all of the money that we have to, plus a little bit more from that current year.
Is that the 1.19?
Correct. That's the number we have to use.
So we're using that plus the 400?
Correct. In the current year, we're using, it's similarly, we're using, it's about 1.4 total, and it's one point, this is in the current year.
Oh, okay.
Right? So in the current year, we're using about 1.4, 1.1 of which, I'm using round numbers, 1.1 of which is money we have to spend this year because it was last year's reimbursement, you have to use it within two years. And the 300, the additional 300, is what we're, part of what we're getting this year.
Okay. So, okay. Okay, I think I follow all of that. Is it the same thing with school choice?
So school choice is, we are using all of what we are, we are getting reimbursed for next year, which is the 250.
250.
And then we have in fund balance, as you know, what effectively happened over the last several years was, we were getting school choice money and we're also getting federal dollars. So the federal dollars got spent and the school choice didn't, so it, and that's a revolving account that allows us to carry it over. So now it's time for us to start spending that money down. But we'll still be receiving in the coming year, 250,000 because we have about 49,50 students in school choice.
Okay.
Currently, that we'll have next year too.
Okay. Do you have on hand what we have, what you have in that account?
So our beginning balance at this, beginning of this year is, I'm going to give you round numbers, 1.5 million.
Okay.
We're spending in the current year, 700,000.
Okay.
Okay? We are expecting about 240, we're also expecting to get 245 from the state because we have, so the one, so we start, 1.5 is money that we have in the bank. It's our savings account.
Mm-hmm.
We're getting paid by the state for our school choice students that we have right now, approximately 250, it's 245, approximately, 245, $1,000.
Okay.
All right? So we're, we've got 1.5, we're adding 250, so that's 1.75. We're spending 7 this year. That was in last year's assessment. In the coming year, we will have, if you cancel that, you end up with about a million, right? At the beginning of next year, our projected income, I'm going to guess is about 250, right? Unless, quite honestly, we're, I think we have a discussion about school choice tonight. So if we end up with more students, we end up with more money for, that happens in the year, not a year late like in circuit breaker.
It's not a reimbursement.
Correct. Right? So I'm going to project around 250, right?
Okay.
With my fingers crossed it'd be higher. All right? And in '26, I apologize, I think I sent you an email, but it had, it's eight...
That wasn't it.
Oh, okay. It's 800,000, as you can see in the assessment. So 1 million plus 250,000 minus 800,000 gets us the end of next year of about 400,000.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Okay.
Then, that year, at the beginning of '26, sorry, at the beginning of '27, we'll have 400,000, plus we will be getting our yearly allotment, hopefully more than 250, but maybe 250. So you could think that we would have approximately 650, 700,000 in that year. It is obviously depleting. That is our responsibility to spend that money so that we can, we can give, you know, respite to the towns, but ultimately, it's phasing it out over multiple years because, to avoid a cliff.
Okay. That's all I need for now.
Exact numbers, Margaret, were sent to Deb, so.
Oh, okay, yeah. I just, conversation. Capital jet, is that the last payment in grace?
It's the last payment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Can I ask a question?
Courtney, go ahead.
It's about this sheet.
Yes.
We have substitute salaries, 36,980.
Yep.
I know we've also had discussions about potentially increasing the substitute pay rate because it's really low, so that could potentially negate this savings, right?
Good.
Are we going to, how do we have that discussion about the rate then? Since we've talked about it a couple times.
Put it on your agenda, hash it out. And hash it out.
Yep.
But it is, it is not something negotiated. You make the decision relative to what that is. So can I make a suggestion? My suggestion would be, well, I'll take it on. I'll reach out to some local districts and find out what the substitute rates are. I'll present them to you at the next meeting. And then you can hash it out from there.
Perfect. Thanks, Jack.
Terry, you already got a lot of it, so.
I already did some.
I volunteered for doing, to do nothing really. So thanks, Terry.
No, you got it, you can present it. I'll just make sure we have enough for the surrounding. But we put it out earlier to find out some of these pieces.
Okay.
That's great.
Thank you. Okay. So with that being said, our two other topics to review in the book are special education and then technology, so we're going to go ahead and...
You know what, you have to stay. Ryan, though, let's talk technology, Ryan.
Oh, Ryan, short straw.
All right. So in our technology budget, if you get to that place in the, I believe it is number You can see that in overall, our technology spending has decreased, or for this recommended budget, has decreased by 1%. But there, there's some, it's some sort of wild, that's the wrong word, there are some large fluctuations within the book as you, as you go through it. And some of that is Ryan and I fine-tuning exactly how we should be identifying the lines of spending and where they should go. So it is a matter of recognizing that, and this is, quite honestly, I'm going to share with you, that is, it creates a little bit of nervousness for someone in my position because I know that people are going to look at a budget book and they're going to see a percentage increase of 52%. And that's what their eyes are going to go to. Maybe not the negative 43%, a few steps above that. But if we're doing this right, and we're servicing the needs of the students, there are going to be years where we're going to need to purchase hardware. And there's going to be years we're going to purchase software. It's important for us to track that appropriately so that we can see it over time, what has our spending been, instead of simply putting it in a sort of a generic technology line. So if you're in a year where you're going to be purchasing hardware and that's your need, which you didn't need to buy in the previous year or nearly the amount, your percentage increases are going to jump up, whereas in the case of software, those percentages, those lines might go down. That's exactly what happened here. There is a couple of places that I want to bring to your attention. You'll notice that the, let's see here, the 52% increase where it says salary admin tech professional, that's about a third of the way down. You see it?
Yep.
Okay. So here's, here's what happened. Last year, my predecessor made a decision to zero-fund the salary data administrator line. This is our data administrator. We have one person services our data administrator, they keep track of all of our data and they send it to the state as necessary. The plan, I believe, was to utilize the tech revolving fund to fill that need. However, our data administrator doesn't do anything that would line up with the revolving, tech revolving fund. We do have technicians in the district that do in fact, come in contact with our Chromebooks, fix our Chromebooks, repair our, you know, address any number of things with the equipment across the district, right? And that tech revolving fund is specifically there for the breakage that occurs in the Chromebooks, both through an insurance payment for some families as well as payments that they're making for the repairs themselves. So it didn't make sense to, to link data administration to the revolving fund going forward at any point, but it did make sense for the salary admin tech professional. So at the beginning of this year, I adjusted those budget lines so that the data administrator could be paid appropriately per salary. And the admin tech professionals, while, and quite honestly, that number was too greatly cut. So you can see our salary, our data administrator is the salary for this year of 76,491. We don't, you, we're not going to utilize 75,000 from the tech revolving fund. More likely, the number's going to be around 30,000 in labor for repairs. Okay? So that number has been adjusted to occur and exist in the admin tech professional line. It still isn't, it's an increase, and it's an increase because as I adjusted the budget last year, right, the 75,000 got put in, the negative 75,000 got put in the admin tech line.
Right.
And then we have, and there, and we are using the revolving fund. It won't, it didn't fulfill that 75, but each year, we're going to look at approximately 30 to 40,000 because that's what we're doing. That's what those gentlemen are doing. They are in fact fixing equipment that that money is meant to be. And so it should be as its labor, it should be coming as salary. That's why that number is the way it is, is as a result of the fact that this was underfunded by 75,000 at the beginning of the, beginning of the budget process last year. You can see that in the middle of here, we have some reductions of 5,000, 11,000. These are places where, talking about software, the software needs for the current year are less than our hardware, so you can see some increases where the hardware numbers have jumped up, like for example, instructional hardware, about 80% way down there for NAES, you see 12,367. In the previous year, no money was spent for the hardware because we didn't have a need for it in that year. Well, and we were also able to utilize semester money for it as well, probably purchase some Chromebooks. Specifics regarding this, I can give you, certainly our director of technology can provide the answers to any questions you may have as well. But that is, that is where we are for technology.
Any questions for Jack? On the table? Audience, anyone? Ms. French, go ahead.
Through the chair as Margaret goes up. Ryan, put you on the spot here. What about, what makes you nervous about what we're looking at here? Anything?
On this budget?
Yeah.
No. What makes me nervous is the future. We have a lot of big ticket items that are going to need to be addressed. We have Windows desktop machines that are going to have to be replaced. We have infrastructure switches that we're putting in 2013, those coming into life. In this budget, we are going to be putting in a new phone system that we are going to be leasing. It's going to be over four years, so that will be an added cost that you'll see for four years.
Thank you. Yeah, and the annual cost for that, it was, it was going to be approximately 150,000 for the full system to purchase it in one year, and we're using the lease process in order to own it in four and spread out the payments. But our phone system is in need of updating. It currently does not meet the requirements.
It's a need that current laws...
Yeah. It's not just like our requirements for being able to make phone calls, it actually...
The system was put in in 2015 as well, so it's run its course. We did the last software update this past year, and there's no more updates, there's no more support on that phone system. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions on things that, that are here. The, where is it? The administrative tech, the like fourth and fifth line down?
Yep.
You said it was consolidation, district-wide dental, digital, wow, digital services. Is this that individual 6,466 that was in every school?
No, it's, it's a number of software licenses that we use that were spread out in the buildings, but now they're being paid out of one single line.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not, so that will still show up in all the individual?
It will not show up in the individual buildings anymore because now we're paying it out of this centralized region.
No, that's 6466, whatever.
Oh, oh. Yes, the cost of the, that is the cost for Aspen.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Building security went from 600 to 2,000, is that just...
Well, over the last year, we, we put in the Raptor system.
Is that what that's for?
And then also for all the PA system, or the communication system that was put in place for all the buildings as well.
Okay. And then the last question, just to understand what everything is, the first line in each one of the schools is, what is that, schedule, Reddicker?
Oh, so this is, we will need to update it. Reddicker was the former student information system, and it was, when this was originally created, someone typed in Reddicker instead of putting in SIS system. We now use Aspen, but that's, that's there. That's the six, that's the 6646. So you see it went up to seven, in the previous year, you can see it's 6646, in this year it's 7437.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, Christopher Flonkelake for Finance Committee, two questions. Chromebooks. I know that was been in prior discussion. Is that an expense coming down the road?
So are, in future years?
Right.
Yes. Well, as will always be the case, if we have Chromebooks and they are going to eventually reach end of life, then we'll need to be able to replace them. We do have a schedule in place. We don't, we don't expect the replacements to all happen at once. They've done a nice job of replacing as needed and putting a schedule together so that it's, we're sort of spreading out the costs over multiple years. And then ultimately, you end up back where you started, right, over time. But yes, so it's not in this one because we don't have any purchase needs for the current year, but you can see down the road, of course, yeah.
Following year, they'll start budgeting for that.
Sure. The following year, the following year after that, it's going to be, it is part of the cost of doing business if we're using Chromebooks.
Desktop, so we've noticed that you're going to look for a desktop replacement in the coming years.
So the teachers have Windows desktops right now, and the teachers in Windows 10 is coming into life support. Those desktops were originally purchased, I want to say around 2015 as well, so we've gotten about 10 years out of them. So we're going to have, we've started replacing them.
So we're going to have, we've started replacing them. We replaced about 100, we have about 475 desktops. We replaced roughly about 100 so far and we're going to be doing that the following year.
So you're phasing, you're phasing it. You're not going to get hit with a 400 desktop expense in two years. You graduate.
Ideally, but because of security and, you know, such security issues that are going on, you really want to make sure that we're getting the patch updates and machines are not vulnerable to cyber attack.
Right. I understand that. Are you using a lease model for the desktops that they purchased?
The ones that they, that are there, currently they purchased them.
Are you leasing them going forward?
We could be an option. We could lease or finance depending on what is available.
Okay. Thank you. That's all there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Any other questions? Okay, we can move on.
All right. Onto tab 12. Tab 12, Student Services. So as I shared with you, we have identified some savings as a result of some changes that literally just changes it from the conversations that we were having and projections in January until now, because these, this is an ever-changing landscape when it comes to out-of-district tuitions. So we've identified those savings and you can see them in that handout that I gave you. So in the bottom half of the page on this budget, on the first of the two pages, you can see where the out-of-district tuitions are. The second page, you can see that the, um, these are where it breaks down by building and the salaries broken down by building coming for special education teachers, PARAs and adjustment counselors, as well as we have sub-lines specifically for our PARAs, for example. There was an adjustment made here, which is shared with you in that handout that I gave you. In the, initially, you can see that the, um, the school choice offset for the high school, the first group, was 121,960. It won't be, that was because we had two, as I've shared with you, school choices utilized for salaries. It is because of the fact that school choice is required to be providing, the money has to go towards the service of the students who are school choice students. Salaries do that for us. You couldn't use it to pay for an extra bus, specifically because school choice students don't use the bus.
Right.
But in this case here, the, they're, out of that 121,960, a portion of that is for a student, a school adjustment counselor, one of the school adjustment counselors at the high school who's paid out of school choice. And the other one was a paraprofessional that was at the high school. That was, that, that was adjusted there because that paraprofessional was on, was being paid from school choice in the current year. It's not uncommon to continue it over, it's just a little bit easier for management. However, that paraprofessional retired. So that retirement happened after I had put this together and so we needed to make a change. And so instead of using a paraprofessional from one of the high schools, we adjusted it to being a paraprofessional from, um, AES. Okay? So you can see that, and that's primarily in that handout that I gave you, how the school choice numbers adjusted a little bit. And we still have to find about $1,200 to, um, to take out of the budget and put into, um, school choice because we had exactly 800,000 with the numbers that we had and then we had a retirement. We had, didn't have exactly the same salary to fit it in, to cover it up. But we'll make sure that's taken care of in due time. Let's see here. You can see there are several places where they're talking about, uh, funding from the IDEA grant in the previous year. This is the place where so many of, so many of the salaries were. We have several PARAs that are being paid in the currently out of the 94142 grant. And, uh, you can also see that in the first line in the, I'm sorry. You can also, if we go, well, I'll go back, I'm going to stop for a second. I'm going to let you ask questions about this page and then I'm going to go back a page. I don't want to leave you. Okay, so this is, these are salaries from the buildings for special education. If we turn back a page, you can see school choice offset of 188,629. That is going to, as, we had two positions that were being paid out of the grant that are going to now be paid out of, they were just shifted over to the school choice line instead of being, moving directly into the general fund. Ultimately, these are, uh, decisions that we make, that we're, that make it a little bit easier to track. School choice, for example, if we can, we like to identify, uh, employees that are on a 22 pay because then you don't have to, um, you don't have to adjust for accruals over the summer. It just makes it a little bit easier from, for, you know, management. But ultimately it doesn't, you know, we could select, we have $800,000 to spend out of school choice. We can, we, we pick the salaries that match the 800,000.
Any questions? Okay. Go ahead.
One quick one. I save my out-of-district question for now. In the past, and I don't know if we still have, there was a, a student that was a sizable out-of-district, um, fee. But they were hospitalized, so that fee was never used. Is that still true?
We do, we do not have that student on our list anymore, but we, that student aged out.
So are there any out-of-district, um, things that are in the budget that we don't have to pay for?
No, they're all.
Not anymore?
Yeah, they're, but that's, there were a couple of things that we've identified and that's where that 149005 were savings from adjustments as a result of changes that occurred since January.
Okay.
Yeah, but the, but.
But everything that's in the budget is because it's actually being spent, not in case of.
And quite honestly, this, there is, it's a little bit of moving target when we get into the year. We'll have a potential for move-ins, move-outs. We'll have, uh, potential for, we had, we've had, you know, that, those kinds of things. Cause that number to fluctuate.
Right.
Always crossing our fingers that it's working in our favor.
Right. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Anything additional? Can you continue, Jack?
I'm done.
Okay.
Those are the three sections.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to new business. I will entertain a motion to approve the payroll warrants from February 19th of this year.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Payroll warrants passed. School calendar.
What you have before you is the transfer of dates primarily from this year's calendar to next year. So this is just for the initial discussion. We've actually had some discussion with the union as well for some slight changes, but you'll notice that we're, uh, starting school on the day after Labor Day, which falls nicely at the beginning of the month. Federal holidays are taken and then our, uh, half-days are spread throughout the year. However, we are already going to let you know that the February PD day is going to move to January and the April one is going to move to March. That allows, um, for less interruptions close to break weeks and it doesn't put a half-day close to MCAS testing. So it provides more instructional time closer to assessment windows and it removes those half-days from, um, from.
Busy, busy months.
Yeah. Something to note that is a little bit different is the winter break, uh, the December break. We do have, uh, the 24th and the 25th are, are holidays, so we started the break then. Typically, we come back on the 2nd of January. The 2nd of January falls on a Friday. That would be a difficult day to get, it would probably end up being a low attendance day. So rather than try to, um, fight that, uh, we're going to, we, we're looking at having that day off as a continuation for staff and family. And then it doesn't butt us up right to the Juneteenth, but it is something to be aware of if we have any snow days. We are, the way Juneteenth holiday falls, anything that's providing foreclosures is going to like move us into that week after. That's always uncomfortable for people as we get close to the end of the month.
Excellent. Little question.
Through the chair, my only piece of feedback is, and you may have already done so, but can we just get the feedback from Cheryl, the town clerks in both towns, just to make sure nothing falls on?
I've actually already shared this with her.
You're the best. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Initial questions on the calendar? From Ms. Fleming, anybody?
I have a question on this calendar, but I have a question on the calendar in general. So I know there's always the potential for makeup days, like for snow days and whatnot, but what happens in the event that one school is closed because the heat goes out, but not the other schools? So.
What a, what a great question.
Interesting example.
Hypothetically, what happens is there are some rules around when you have to, have to schedule to make up that day and when you can request for waivers. If your students are in the building and they have to leave during the day, that does not count as a, a non-school day. It counts in our favor even though lunch may or may not have been served. Typically, it's, you're in attendance and food has been served. So hypothetically, if the kids are in the school and the heat goes out and we have to send them home, um, then we don't have to make that day up. In the situation where we thought of our families and notified as quickly as possible, we did submit for a waiver from the state. I have been fortunate enough to hear back. Jack and I had a phone call with, uh, Rob Curtin at the state and he was, um, asked some more questions about who was in the building at the time and what were the situation. We are looking at a favorable outcome to that waiver of not having to make up that day. However, there might be a stipulation that the students need to go a full day on the April half-day. So rather than making up a full day, extending that day possibly on the PD day, um, which we still have to have, um, further conversation with the union on that piece.
And that would be for that specific school, not the entire district?
Correct.
Just for that school. Yep. However, I will say I have very, uh, quite a few colleagues that have gone through this, this year and have had to make up that day. One building making up that day. It's very reasonable for the state to deny waivers. And, um, so I feel like we're in a good, good position, uh, thankful position that they are, um, looking at our situation, um, for what it was.
Kindly.
Yes. Kindly.
Yeah. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
And we don't have the official letter on that yet, but as soon as we do, I'll, we'll celebrate appropriately with the.
I didn't know what the process was.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Uh, we know, right? It's one of those things where I go, God, if the buses had arrived and we sent them home, we wouldn't even be asking for a waiver. But, um, we did the right thing for our families and I'll stand by that.
I will, I'll ask of the committee members, questions, concerns, friendly suggestions, anything on the calendar. Email them to me. I'll put them together, you know, send them to, you know, send them to Terry together as a whole. If that works for you, Terry.
Wonderful.
Okay, uh, school choice.
We are requesting that the school committee vote to remain a school choice district. We would like to open up our school choice seats to, um, all of the buildings. Found my numbers here? Oh, thanks. We'd like to accept new students, uh, at two seats per grade level at AES and FES. Three seats, um, two seats per grade level at Grays. Three seats per grade level at the middle school and the high school. We, I know.
We did have Grays originally.
Yeah, but it is, we do have Grays now.
We do now? Okay. So I didn't realize that, sorry. How many seats?
Two seats per grade.
So the number should be 39, not 33.
37.
Two grades of Grays.
But ultimately, as is always the case, when voting to become a school choice district, you're not necessarily just voting for that number.
Right.
That number can go above if you, under circumstances, and it can be under obviously as well.
Um, we currently have 48 school choice students. This, uh, this, these additions, if we were to fill all of these seats, does not jeopardize any of our class sizes. Even at Grays, we're not exceeding a 24 per classroom.
Okay. My question. Any question, discussion on school choice?
How much would that amount be?
The dollars? I don't think I have the figures for the new costs yet.
I don't, we don't know what the, and, and there's some variation because of special education.
Just based on the number you gave.
So if we were to fill all the seats that we potentially have?
Well, if we're at 48 right now and we're making that 250 currently, and we add 37, we would be making two-thirds of 250.
Could be an increase, it could be, it could be an increase of about 400 grand.
And historically, seats in the elementary level have filled without an issue.
Quick.
Yeah. Okay. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to vote for this school district to remain a school choice district with the targeting open seats at each of the buildings.
So moved?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Could I ask, are we just correcting in the future minutes that Grays is open as well?
Yes, I will do that because tomorrow, everything will be posted on the website, so that will be redone before it's posted.
Beautiful. Awesome. Thanks very much. All right, public participation shall be in accordance with our policy. Each speaker will be permitted a maximum of three minutes during which time they can speak about topics listed on the school committee agenda for this evening. This section is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between or among citizens and the school committee. Rather, it is intended to offer citizens an opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. And I'll ask anybody that is here for, for public participation, kindly fill your name and information on the sheet at the podium. Is anybody here tonight for public participation? Okay. Seeing none, I will move on to subcommittee updates. Regional finance.
We have a meeting next Wednesday scheduled.
People skip over superintendent evaluation?
And no updates at this time.
Wellness, health?
No updates at this time.
Uh, policy?
No. No updates.
Capital committee.
No updates to my knowledge outside of what Jack shared with us, just revolving around Habib coming to do the, the assessment.
Okay. Yes, that was excellent to hear, Jack. I've got a significant amount of increase from, you know, concerned community members on the status of the pool and it was excellent news to hear that we're looking into an engineering study. Would it be possible to get a more, uh, in-depth discussion on the pool maybe at our next meeting?
Absolutely. I also have a timeline for you on, on the engineering proposal.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Screening Committee, I can give a brief update on that. The Screening Committee met. They put forth three excellent candidates for the position. We had interviews for the candidates this past Monday. Prior to the interviews, uh, one of the candidates that was put forward withdrew their name from the rates. We interviewed, we interviewed two people on Monday and the committee voted to go into negotiations for a contract with Dr. Barbara Starkey, uh, currently of, uh, the Horn School District, but a former, former staff member here. So we look forward to some good news coming out of that. So we look forward to some good news coming out of that. Any additional business to come before the meeting?
Just in your packet and stuff, in your breakfast.
Okay.
Do you want to announce it?
Be there or be square.
That's our favorite.
It is.
So I'll just announce it. So the school district and the school committee is hosting a breakfast at the Freetown Laco Middle School for seniors on Monday, April 14th at 8:30 a.m. Join us for scrambled eggs, pancakes, hash browns, bacon, coffee, tea, and juice.
And a good time.
And a good time.
And Bob.
You can sign up at the local senior center. Awesome.
Fantastic. Okay. If there is no other items, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much, everyone.